Yeah. We were talking about that last night. Part of the issue.
Okay.
How you doing this morning?
Hey. You okay?
Yeah.
Well, do you think we need to take my wife back into my car this morning? Would it help if the board takes action for the opposition?
Upper side. It's been years ago, but I don't even know.
I propose to do it now and get him to move before it gets into him.
I know. But at least he can say.
I was thinking.
Where we park our car. And that way he gets some backing.
That has caused war.
Never know.
And then the solution in my mind, basically, back. If I drove, if everybody drove forward, there would be. Just the back. She had puppies out there. She started to puppy them. And they're.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I, that's kind of.
I need to somehow body pound my car now. I've got.
Maybe it was their attorney's side. We can un-lawy.
Basically fix that before it's paid for.
Oh. See, my insurance type people here, is there anybody here for any of these property things? That you recognize? Well, good morning. Welcome to the September 29th Board of Supervisors meeting for Clara County. If you would please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. See you then. Beautiful morning. Fifteen degrees cooler today, we're hoping. Our first item on our agenda today is a presentation by Mr. Paul Yoder. Good morning, Paul. It's good to have you here again. You're going to give us the rainbow version of, and the sunny side version of the city of Sacramento.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I will certainly try. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and other board members. I did hear a front is moving this way, so there may be a rainbow associated with that if we're lucky. I am going to try to hit a couple of points very briefly and allow the board members as much time for questions this morning as possible. I first want to just talk about where we are in the process. The governor has until October 11th to sign her veto legislation. Everyone, I think, saw on the press that he has threatened to veto everything that's on his desk unless the legislature acts on water, prisons, and renewables reform. I think if you're tracking any of those three issues closely at all, you know that those three tests have, in fact, not been met, certainly not in full. Nevertheless, the governor has already signed a bill to buttress the Healthy Families Program in California, and the governor has, in fact, already signed a bill that would commemorate a certain day of the year as a welcome home day for Vietnam veterans. So since his threat, the governor signed a couple of bills, and I think the expectation is that enough progress has been made on those three issue areas to where the governor probably will sign and veto the 400 or so measures that are on his desk based on their merits. We probably will not see a blanket veto in the next week and a half the way we did last year. But if the governor does do a blanket veto by October 11th, that could feed into the next important juncture in Sacramento, which is the state senate returning to town on October 13th to allegedly just be there the 13th, the 14th, and the 15th to finish some unfinished business. There were 20 or so measures that, in the last 48 hours of the regular legislative session, got hung up because they didn't have the necessary two-thirds votes. One of those measures is the Prop 1A Securitization Bill that's very, very important to counties and cities around the state. Right now, the rumor is that the state senate will return on the 13th, 14th, and 15th. They will take up the 20 bills that were hanging fire, including the 1A Securitization Bill. There's rumors that they may also take up this new tax overhaul proposal that was headline news this morning, and there are also rumors that if they can finally get the deal to come together on water, that they may try to tackle that as well on October 13th, 14th, and 15th. It is not clear at this time if the assembly will come back during those same days. So we may just have the state senate in session, which is a little odd, but for all you Zen enthusiasts, if you ever wonder what it sounds to listen to one hand clap, check out the legislature on October 13th, 14th, and 15th. So we'll see what happens there. When we shift gears into the budget, going to the chairman's comments about rainbows, I think what passes for rainbows these days is when we don't have a $30 billion deficit and maybe instead we only have a $10 billion deficit. When they passed the budget, a week later, the estimate was that the deficit for 1011 probably would be about $7 billion. Since that time, the prison reform package probably, it's estimated, will only bring in about two-thirds to three-quarters of the estimated $1.2 billion in savings. Since that time, I think it's become even more clear, in addition, that the sale of the state compensation insurance fund to the tune of a billion dollars probably will not actually materialize. Since that time, the August receipts have come in about $300 million to the bad, which I can't emphasize that this enough, in the current climate, after everything we've been through over the last 18, 24 months, $300 million down for one month is actually pretty good, the way things have been trending. So you add everything up that I just mentioned, and I think we're probably heading for a deficit to the tune of about $10 billion at a minimum in 1011. The projections are, for the out years beyond that, for 1112 and for 1213, that the deficits would probably be more in the neighborhood of $15 billion for each of those years. The reason for that will be that the temporary tax increases that were passed in February will all off, fall off the books, and they will expire. And so there will be billions of dollars less in revenue coming into the state of California. Two very important budget issues for this county, certainly the Special Distribution Fund and the Williamson Act. I want to talk about those both individually. There is a measure on the governor's desk, SB 357, that will remove the sunset on the Special Distribution Fund. That's the good news. The bad news is there's no money appropriated from the Special Distribution Fund to the counties, again, for '09, '10. The funding through the SDF over the last three or four years has been sporadic. We skipped a year, then we got it funded. Looks like we skipped another year, but by removing the sunset, we're hopeful that going forward, if the state's finances can improve a little bit, that we can get that money appropriated year to year to year on into the future. On the Williamson Act, I can't tell you how hard we have tried and a lot of people have tried to get that money reinstated. The money was in the budget, and I think everybody knows that the money was in the budget. There was a series of events, the last 24 hours of when they were passing the budget, that led to ultimately the governor blue penciling $500 to $600 million in programs. Included in those blue pencils, in those line un-vitos, was the funding for the Williamson Act. We have been working as hard as we can to convince the administration to propose to put that money back in. Counties for '08, '09 actually only received the subvention in late April, early May, for that fiscal year, I mean, 10 months into the fiscal year. We are hopeful, and I don't want to give anybody a false hope, but we are hopeful that the governor and his January proposal will propose to fund the Williamson Act for '09, '10, and hopefully for 1011. The main thing I want to impress upon the board today is that we have a legislative vehicle that is all the way through the senate. It's pretty far along through the assembly. It is on the topic of the Williamson Act. We introduced it originally to do some modest reforms to the act, but the author is willing, after looking at what the governor proposes in January, to either put funding for the Williamson Act into her bill, a straight, just straight-up state general fund appropriation, or to try to think of some new creative way to finance the program going forward. So, again, I don't want to give anybody false hope, but I do want everybody to understand that we are working on that as hard as we possibly can, and if there's a way to save that program, we will. But frankly, we're not going to know anything new, I think, until January 10th, when the governor proposes his next budget. So I did want to highlight that for the board. Just looking ahead very quickly, 2010 is obviously an election year. Everybody knows that that has effects on the legislature. We're obviously also going to have a lame duck governor. Felt him getting a little lamer and a little duckier, I think, frankly, towards the last couple of months. It's going to be interesting to see the interplay between those two things. This does have an impact on counties. This does have an impact on California, and I think that the best recent example, and I think you'll see more of in 2010, is on the prison reform issue. There was a proposal to enact a sentencing commission, and that's where that last third of savings would have come from, of the $1.2 billion. Not only were there not the votes in the Republican caucuses for that proposal, there were not the votes in the Assembly Democratic Caucus for that proposal. 14 Assembly Democrats are running for higher office of some form or function, and there were not the votes, there weren't even anywhere near the votes to enact that proposal and to realize that last third of the savings that the governor had proposed. And whether you think it should have been done or shouldn't have been done, just as a political analysis exercise, the reason it didn't happen was because people were looking ahead to the next election. And I think, you know, in 2010, you will see more things like that happen or not happen in the legislature because of factors like that. Speaking of the legislature, I think folks know, but very briefly, and then I'll take some questions, there are initiatives currently circling or making the rounds for signature gathering on one end of the political spectrum to do away with the two-thirds vote requirement, to pass a budget in the state of California. On the other end of the spectrum, there's an initiative being circulated for signatures right now that would return the legislature to part-time status. And I think in between those twos, there's a gamut. And for November of 2010, for June of '12, for November of '12, I think we're heading into another era in California politics where we, the voters, are going to have at least a dozen measures to choose from every time we go to the polls, if not more, if not more. I think with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll conclude my remarks, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Well, my only statement is, I think, some of us are of the opinion that it's a good thing if the legislators are not in Sacramento. You don't need to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very interesting. Let's go down the line here. I know we're going to have some questions for you, Paul, so start with mine.
The Hoota Tax, the highway users' tax, has that been brought back to the table, or is it still?
The taking of the money? It hasn't, and, you know, one of the things, quite frankly, Supervisor, I'm, I am concerned, and really, I would like to respond to the chairman's last remark if I could. I think it's just a fact that there's less of a chance that bad things will happen to counties if the legislature, especially in the current fiscal climate, I'll caveat it that way, if they're not in session. I mean, when the senate comes back for three days, we're actually going through all the bills that are back on the senate floor for concurrence with urgency clauses in them, because any bill that meets those tests that I just laid out can be taken up by the senate and passed to the governor. And in the early morning of September 12th, we thought we were done, but now we're not. And we know, we think we know the senate's coming back. Like I said, the assembly may not be able to stand it, you know, just letting the senate and the senate alone come back, so the assembly may feel a need to come back too. And when that's true, I think, when we're staring down the barrel of a $10 billion deficit, another deficit, I think it wouldn't be that much of a stretch for the governor to say, "I had a way to save a billion dollars for the state of California, and it was to take this Hoota money." And so we are concerned, and we are being vigilant about that, and I just think because of the constant deficit pressure, any proposal that's ever been floated, especially by the governor, I mean, we have to assume that it can come back at any juncture. So we haven't heard any rumors to that effect, but we're watching out for it. You got it.
Paul, I'm just curious, your take, I realize there's a lot of ifs and ands and buts and maybes about any kind of restoration of the subvention of the Williamson Act, but this is even more complicated by the fact that it might come back, but in a diminished form, because the Time Honored, what we've had for a number of years, was cut last year permanently by 10%. The proposed budget amount was actually cut another additional 20% this year, apparently not on a permanent basis, but it was a 20% reduction, so you're looking at 70% of your subvention. And so the question is, when we think about it coming back, what do we think is going to come back? I mean, is it reasonable to think it would become back beyond the 70% that was in the original budget, or the best we could hope for would be to get the 70% that was in the original budget? I wonder if you have any thought about that.
I think best-case scenario, you would see the subvention amount less than 20% that was proposed in the budget. And since at, by January 10th, we'll be more than halfway through the fiscal year, I wouldn't be surprised if the governor proposed some.
Lesser amount.
Even lesser amount. And going forward, assuming the program is sustained in some fashion, looking ahead to 1011, I think that's a very good question. I think there are, I think there's going to be, especially if the governor doesn't propose to fund it on January 10th, I think you're going to see people continue to explore, "Well, now what? Well, now what? What does this mean for land use across huge swaths of California?" And, I mean, the list of stakeholders on this thing now is as long as your arm. And one of the most interesting things I think I've seen over the last year has been watching the environmental groups really go to bat for the Williamson Act after the passage of SB 375 by Senate Pro Tem Daryl Steinberg, which is the new, you know, I know the board members know, but just making sure the public knows, it's the new law that's going to radically change how, you know, land use patterns in the state of California. There was a letter supporting the Williamson Act that was signed by probably the 10 largest environmental organizations in the state of California, because of $28 million, there's a lot of land that isn't being developed in the state of California. So the program isn't hurting, the point I'm really trying to make is the program is not hurting for supporters. And, you know, the governor, who, for whatever reason, during his tenure, is as good a governor as he's been for counties, you know, the Williamson Act, multiple occasions, he's tried to pull that rug out from under us. We finally got to a point where it was back in the budget, albeit at the reduced amount, and then when he did those vetoes, you know, it came right back out again. So I think, Supervisor, you're going to see a lesser amount proposed, because that's a fact of life because of the fiscal situation, and then beyond that, there's going to be a policy, I was going to say debate, debate's too nice a word, I think there's going to be a policy battle over what happens after the Williamson Act, and we're going to need to be talking about that more going forward.
Just if I can jump in, it just seems that this is such a big fight for a small piece of the deficit. As I look at the overall, you know, amount of money we're looking at, and I look at the Williamson Act, and it's like, why are we having such a huge fight over this small piece of money? It just seems like the fight is bigger than the potential outcome for this supervisor as I look at the battle.
I agree, but we're on our second governor that's taking issue with the program. Hopefully, we're not going to have a third, but this is the second governor in a row that really has tried to undo the program. I just, you know, I can't.
Unfortunately.
Can't sugarcoat it, really.
Supervisor Vanderpoel, do you have questions?
Paul, I do have a question for you. You know, as we continue to see businesses leave the state of California and our illustrious state legislature talking about ways to bring more revenue to the state, but yet we see our businesses leave, how realistic is this tax reform that, I think the report comes out today to the governor? How realistic is it that we see something done on this tax reform in the state of California anytime soon?
I think it's going to be hard. I think that's mainly, it's one of the reasons why I wanted to mention we're going into an election year, and I think that's going to complicate it. It's not even clear for the report, when the report is actually issued, how many of the people that were on the commission will sign it. There's a likelihood that not all of the people on the commission who've poured over this for less, whatever it is, six or eight months, will actually endorse the results. So you start there. And when you take it from that forum into the legislative forum, I think it's going to be even more politically charged, and I just think it's going to be very, very, very difficult. I would actually bet a sandwich that this doesn't happen in 2010.
Sandwich, huh?
Sandwich. That seemed pretty innocuous to me, Supervisor, right?
Okay.
But, you know, clearly, there's people on both ends of the spectrum that want to reform the system. So when I say that, I don't know that this is going to happen, I feel like I also need to say that there are people at both ends of the spectrum that want to reform, and I think at some point, you could maybe see a deal come together if you get that critical mass in the middle. But there are obviously people on the left that want to reform the system, and people on the right that want to reform the system. To me, the question is, when do the people in the middle get offered something that they can actually vote for? I just don't know that we're going to see that in 2010, maybe after that. Yeah.
Questions?
You're getting off easy today.
Thank you.
Any closing comments you'd like to make, or? No, I'd just like to get off easy if. Well, Paul's always, we're thankful that you've come down and met with us and shared this information with us, being there on the, I tell people all the times, we have people on the front lines, and I think we consider you to be our people that are on the front lines, working for us, keeping us informed, and sticking up for us when we can't be there for ourselves. So we thank you for that and appreciate the hard work that you do. Next time you come back, though, you've got to bring some sunshine and rainbows and some good news. I think Supervisor.
So how many years from now do you come?
I think Supervisor Worley would love to hear you say the Williamson Act money is restored to its full value.
Right.
With an escalator clause.
Paul did bring a purple tie, but no rainbow.
So work on that.
We almost made it through the presentation. This outfit was, I know it's after Labor Day, this outfit was selected by my youngest son. So thank you, Supervisor, so much for letting me off easy this morning.
Also, Paul, would you tell those people up there in Sacramento, take their blinders off, look around, see what's going on? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, our next presentation is a presentation regarding the Cutler-Rosi Step Up Youth Center. Angela Reese Alvarez, we'd love to have you come forth, and here comes the sunshine, Paul.
Yes, I won't be talking about a $10 billion deficit or anything like that. So on a much lighter note, thank you for having us here, Supervisors, and good morning.
Morning.
Again, thank you for having us here. We do represent the Cutler-Rosi Youth Center, the Step Up Youth Center. My name is Angela Reese Alvarez, and I work for the Cutler-Rosi Joint Unified School District. And my role with the district is to oversee after-school programs, and part of the after-school programs encompasses the youth center. And I have with me Logan Robertson, our Assistant Director of Community Services, my partner in crime, we're always together. I also brought Julie Sanchez. She oversees the day-to-day operations of the youth center. And I know that we have Shirley, who's happy to be here because she's out of school this morning. Thank you for having it in the morning, right, Shirley? She is a youth who attends our youth center, and you'll be able to ask her questions, and she'll give you just a little bit about our youth center. So we'll go ahead and get started. Just a difference a year can make, prior to the opening of the Step Up Youth Center, Cutler-Rosi really didn't have a youth center for about 18 years. There were some attempts to a youth center that really not, that really didn't get off the ground. So this is really exciting for us. We are celebrating our one-year anniversary, and that actually happened in August, so we are one years old, and we would like to thank you for that one year. The Step Up Youth Center has been a safe place for Cutler-Rosi youths to hang out, to learn, to grow, and to develop positive relationships with our peers and our role models. And there's one young gentleman enjoying reading there at the youth center. Now, getting started, the opening of the new sheriff's station in Cutler left a vacancy in their old building, and I'm sure Supervisor Worley can tell you that we all bombarded him with opportunity to use that building. Buildings do not come easily in the Cutler-Rosi area, and though it's small, it's a prime area where it's located for students to access. So the Board of Supervisors encouraged us to develop a coalition of youth-oriented organizations, which we did. And out of that gathering, the Cutler-Rosi Joint Unified School District took the lead. We had this vision of a youth center and being able to support a youth center. We developed an agreement with the Board of Supervisors for the use of the facilities. Now, in order to get this off the ground, we definitely needed some funding. Thankfully, the Cutler-Rosi community has a weed and seed grant that's provided by the Department of Justice, and I know you're going to hear about this later, so just putting in my plug for the weed and seed grant. Also, the Cutler-Rosi Joint Unified School District does have ACES and ASAS after-school funding, and that's by the California Department of Education. We also have received community donations, and most of the community donations are donations such as furniture, computers, and things like that, and of course, the use of the building by the supervisors. Some stats about our center, we have a daily average attendance of 50 to 60 students. And if you've seen our building, if you've been to our building, it is not very big, so 50 or 60 students is a lot. Thankfully, they rotate themselves in. We are open from 2:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And so we have our spurts where there's a lot of kids, and then we have some downtime, and then we get some more kids, but our daily attendance is 50 to 60 students. And they range from ages nine to 18-year-olds. And we keep it around nine years old because we don't want to mix the ages too much, but if we drop that age, we would have probably triple the amount of students there, and we are not set up for that. We are open every day of school, vacation, and summertime, and we are staffed by five highly qualified local residents. I don't know if you recognize that backstop back there, but you and your sons put that together. So thank you for that, that gets a lot of use. As a Step Up Youth Center activities, we do have homework help. Students are able to come in, and our staff is trained to provide homework assistance to the students. We do field trips, arts and crafts, sports activities. We are part of the Pulse activities that go on here in the Visalia area, and our students are able to compete there, and that's been very successful. We do Wednesday library tips, and we did this in the summer to support our local library, team-building activities, local parades. We just finished up the Raisin Day Parade out in your area, and we received two trophies, so we're really excited about that. One of the things that we're really stressing with our students is community service projects. This is something that we're taking up this year and really getting involved and providing opportunity for students to get involved in this. and providing opportunity for students to get involved in their community. One of the things that we do have planned is the blood drive that's coming up here soon. We did have a very successful summer program. We had about 60 students daily, and we were open all day, and some of those students stayed with us all day. So we were very excited about that. Here's some of our students having fun. Doing our arts and crafts, making ice cream. And I'd like to introduce Shirley Trinidad, and she's gonna say a little bit about our youth center.
Hi, my name is Shirley Trinidad. I'm 13 years old, I'm an eighth grader at Almonte Junior High. I attend the youth center because they help me do my homework and the student activities. My favorite activity is arts and crafts. I also like going to the youth center because I like to be with my friends. One more thing I just wanna say, thank you to the board members for letting us have the youth center to keep us safe and out of gangs.
Shirley, you did a wonderful job.
I wanna say again, thank you, especially to the Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Cox, and the Step Up Campaign. We have really taken on the Step Up Campaign, and we really believe that as a community, we can step up and make a difference. Special thanks to Supervisor Worley, you're always there, we really appreciate you. And to Jeff and Jed, I'm sorry that they're not here. They do keep us in mind anytime anything comes up, and they keep us on the forefront, and we do appreciate that they do that for us. And to the community organizations who help sponsor the youth center. So thank you for making a difference in the lives of the youth in Cutler Rossi area. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I thank you for, Angela, for coming and all of you today. There's so much work being done there, and the needs are still so great. And I just wanna say thanks also to our great partners with the school district because really, without their efforts, I think these things would fall flat. The Cutler Rossi School District has really stepped up to the plate and worked very, very hard to, to make things happen there for our kids. And I'm just glad that we've been able to do some things here. You know, there were, there's always hiccups along the way. There were a lot of folks who had their eyes on that facility and that property and wanted to make use of it. And ultimately, I think it, the best result did in fact occur where you have unimpeded use of the facility for your needs. And it's great to see the numbers, the kids who are participating. We had to buy the building because the building really didn't belong to us. We leased it, and there were lots of things along the way. And I appreciate Chairman Cox's support for this project because it was not, it was not a simple road. And it's not, I know it's, I know the operation becomes then the challenge too of day in and day out. And so you're to be commended and congratulated for doing that. And I hope it's sustainable and can go on for, for many years because obviously, the needs continue, the kids keep coming, and they, they need a place to go and hang out and be safe and learn. And, and so it's just a great project. And just, again, thanks for coming here this morning and sharing the results with us.
Comments? Mr. Chairman, this is a fine example of what the Step Up program is really about. And your community has embraced the program, and that's what really makes it work. I know that Supervisor Cox, Supervisor Worley have worked with you, but when it comes down to the direct contact with the kids and making it work, all of you, people who aren't here today, that have embraced this program that makes it successful. So my thanks is really to the community of Cutler Rossi.
I did, I, seeing members of our sheriff's operation or two, I, I would be neglectful to leave them out because another major partner in this whole project has been the sheriff's office and their involvement in the Weed and Seed Program and, and making the facility available. Of course, they were glad to do that, moving into their new quarters. But they have been very, very, I know, a big part of, of the success of this program. And I just wanted to say thanks to Gary Chambers and his staff for working diligently to, to help us along.
I see Lieutenant Chambers with a piece of paper there. Is there something you want to share with us, or is that today's agenda?
That's today's agenda.
Well, you know, what, the one thing I'd like to say is this, you know, this started out as a, as a test to see how it'd work. And I'm hoping that there's other communities in the county that will look at what you've been able to accomplish. This, this is not our accomplishment, this is your accomplishment. This, and we were able to help in some little way, but this is your accomplishment. We're, I think, very hopeful that other communities will, I'll have to use the phrase, step up and want to partner in some way with us because I think we have the ability to help this happen in, in other of our communities. So we hope that folks look towards what you've been able to do and the enthusiasm you have in your community, and we hope that that can spread throughout the county to others. So congratulations. You're, it sounds like you're touching the lives of a whole lot of kids, which is very important to this board because we do care about the children in this county and want to see them succeed. And there's all kinds of paths they can go, so you're provided a wonderful place for them to be. Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to our next item, which is public comments. If there's anybody wishing to address this board on an item that is not on today's agenda. Limits time to 15 minutes, three minutes per person. Is there anybody wishing to speak to us during public comment?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning. I'm Tim Huntley, the county's Human Resources Director. I'm here to take a couple of moments to tell you about the Second Annual Tulare County Share the Health Fair for the county's 4,000-plus employees. It's the Share the Health Fair 2009 Mind, Body, and Spirit. What's just been passed out to you is a copy of the brochure, or the flyer that we prepared for this. On the flip side is actually a map of where each of the vendors that is participating in the fair will be at the convention center. We have 44 different organizations that have signed up this year. This year, for the first time, we ask our profit-related vendors to make a payment for part of their space. We have not achieved the full cost of funding the program, but we've made a dent in it. However, it will be funded from no county dollars whatsoever because we have, through the CSAC Excess Insurance Authority, an educational and training fund, which is actually funded by the cities in the Excess Insurance Authority and not the counties. So the good news is the difference on these costs will be made up from that fund. The bad news is that fund is being eliminated next year, but that really doesn't affect us depending upon what action you take later on today's agenda. So this will not be a, any county dollars directly. Now, obviously, as you can see from the program, we have various programs from the Health and Human Services Agency, so that's staff time commitment, obviously. This program wouldn't be possible without the contributions of HHSA. They are vital to, to putting this program on, and it's very valuable. We are getting ready to start open enrollment on our health insurance, so we will have open enrollment meetings running all day tomorrow, four separate meetings, to introduce the employees to what's coming for 2010. We also have some various breakout sessions here. We have financial wellness sponsored by the Tacoma's Credit Union. We have managing stress from Horizon, our employee assistance program, my Healthy Plate and Nutrition Workshop, and there are others. There will be a variety of demonstrations. We have live, live stage demos of Zumba by In Shape City, Jazzercise, and some other kinds of things. So we have an extremely busy agenda for tomorrow. We also have for all the members of the board, I believe you all have a bag, and I think there's some over there. Rhonda, could you grab one? These bags have, and donations that are, and you have bags, I think, in front of you. These will be given out to the first 900 employees who show up for the fair. That's, but we do have donations that are included in the bag, information related to nutrition and some other information, plus a couple of snacks, healthy snacks. And we're focusing on healthy snacks this year. I think that pretty well covers it. If you have any questions, I would be more than happy to respond, and I, oh, no, there is something else. I'm neglectful. I, I really do need, there are a lot of people I should be thanking for this, but I especially wish to acknowledge the efforts of Ruth Medlin, Monica Emerson, and Phoenix Hawking of my staff, who have coordinated and organized this, and they've done a terrific job. A lot of cooperation, like I said, from HHSA. And so therefore, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to respond to those.
Looks like a wonderful event, full of a, a lot of wonderful information.
And we will see you tomorrow morning, because I know you're going to welcome some of the folks to the morning session, and we'll see you Supervisor Vanderpoel in the afternoon. Welcome, folks. So we appreciate your participation as well.
If you, if you have cholesterol testing, you'll see me too.
Uh, we have cholesterol testing, so come on down.
Make sure Pete gets his flu shot.
That's right, flu shots tomorrow. If you haven't gotten them, that's great. Thank you so much.
Great, thanks very much. Okay, next is our Board of Supervisors Matters. We'll start at the end with Supervisor Ennis.
Yes. Tomorrow, I'll be going to Ollie Street School in Porterville. We had a grant for the youth there in Porterville where they went out to the animal shelter and worked for the animals. And now it's an ongoing, it continues to give as the students go around to the different grammar schools and tell about their project and how it worked. And, and this is something that I think that could be an ongoing deal, hopefully, down the road, that this could be one of those things that could be every year, that kids go out to the animal shelter and work out there with those animals because it does teach them how to care for things. And so I'll be going to school to see what they're, as they talk to the kids, and the kids, uh, kinda, it kinda builds the kids up and gives the kids a sense that, hey, these people were troubled youth that are coming out now and telling us what a great program this was and what it did for them. So looking forward to that very much. Also, Thursday night, I'll be coming over to Convention Center. Judge Glade Roper will be having his drug court graduation. And of course, Paul Williams is coming in, and I'll be presenting him with a proclamation. But looking forward to that event too, because that also helps our communities and gets people back. They become viable citizens again and get some off drugs. So very important programs. Thank you.
As far as see that.
Last week, I attended the Supervisors' meeting for rural counties, which were about 22 counties in California. And the reason that Supervisor Ennis and I attended that meeting was that because Tulare County's 50% is owned by the federal government, we have a lot of forest land. And most of these counties do have a lot of forest lands, and we do share common interests. The one thing we did, we do share is the concern about fire and how we can motivate the federal government to get more active in fire prevention and thinning. The other one's water. And we all realize in the Sierra Nevada counties that 60% of the water, the whole California, come out of the Sierra Nevadas. But there are some counties that are very concerned about California water policy. And they do not feel that they've been engaged in that policy. And one of, one of those issues is the removal of dams. Apparently, there's been some scheduling of dam removal without consultation with the local elected officials. It was just put on a schedule. So water is becoming a more important issue to these rural counties as it, as we know how important it is here. We also met with the two Supervisors from Siskiyou County who all have a rail, rail issue that's similar to ours. And they have a 30-mile line that they're trying to buy from Rail America, who we're dealing with. And the underground, the underlying right-of-way is owned by Union Pacific. From that meeting with the two Supervisors, we plan to meet at our CSAC meeting in November with all the counties that are involved in trying to preserve rail in their counties. And I had a conversation this morning with Santa Cruz County, who have finally got a, received approval to buy their rail. But they had money set aside from state bonds to purchase this rail. So there is outside money, and not general fund money, that is available for the preservation of rail. And basically, that's all I have.
Thank you Supervisor Worley.
Tomorrow, I will be as your representative of the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Governing Board, going to a meeting up in Modesto, which will engage members of the staff and, and also governing board members from the Bay Area Air District. We had a similar meeting in Southern California a while back, and the purpose of these meetings is to try to facilitate opportunities of cooperation and so forth that would help deal with our air quality issues here in, in this part of the state. Obviously, people are aware of the transport issues, of things coming from the Bay Area that find their way down into our part of the country. And so obvious, anything that can be done to improve their air quality has a benefit to us as well. So I look forward to this meeting and the opportunities that it might present for us to do things together. I would be remiss in, I think, in not commenting on last Saturday. There was a public funeral, but a celebration for passing of Jim Maples, and it was well-attended, and family was very appreciative of those who were able to be there and, and share that time with them. But Jim was, of course, a great supervisor here in Tulare County for 15 years and a great friend to all of us. And so it was, it was a celebration, but it was also a very touching and difficult thing as well because of saying goodbye to an old friend.
Supervisor Vanderpoel.
On a lighter note, I just wanted to again congratulate the 4-H kids who Supervisor Ennis and myself addressed last night, and congratulated them for their participation in a wonderful program. And it's nice to see youth involved in positive activities and definitely activities that can serve to benefit the community. And then the, the last thing I wanted to say too was just a, a plug and a public notification of the Government 101 Forum that will be coming on October 22nd. And that will be here in, in this room, in these chambers. And, and that is going to reach out to special districts from throughout the county to help educate them about operation, answer questions, and hopefully, improve the overall functionality of these special districts that serve the residents throughout the county. So if anyone has any questions, please do not hesitate to contact our office or the county council's office. And we hope to get great attendance and, and benefit all those that we're seeking to serve, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add kudos to your clerk. He suggested that since we're doing it in these chambers, it can be recorded on your system and then placed on the county's website. So for those people who are not able to attend or people who are appointed in the future, the training, the, both the verbal training and then the materials will be preserved. I thought that was quite brilliant.
Great, something that's been needed, very good. Only thing I have is to let the board know that the Step Up Service Learning Grants that were awarded to the high schools. We, we did have a young woman go out, I think it's most known, video. I guess they still call it video, videotape, the activities of the youth while they're doing them. And she's putting together a DVD of each of the service learning grant recipients so that we'll have that for not only a record of the good works that were done by those young people, but also to use as promoting that program for potential grant funding in, in the future to not only continue the Step Up Youth programs, but to enlarge them as well. That's all I have. So we will now move to our consent calendar of items 15 through 22. Is there any items that need to be pulled by the board?
Items 5 through 22.
Items 5, you're gonna pull all items 5 through 22?
No, 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 you said 15 through 22. That's what we chose.
Okay. Oh, you know, I did have a one written in front of my.
I would move, Mr. Chairman, I would move approval. Consent calendar, items 5 through 22.
I'll second that. Second by Worley, second by Ennis. That's your votes, it's unanimous. Good thing we just didn't do the seven of them, and we did all. we just didn't do the seven of them, and we did all 17. Next item on today's agenda is a request. We're going to have a presentation, I believe, from Mr. Huntley, a request to accept approved recommendation from our HR and Health Plan Advisor Group, and two paragraphs long. So I'm just going to turn the time over to you, Mr. Huntley. I'm not going to read. I know we're looking at a change in our insurance plan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. It's our recommendation that after three years, as a participant in the California State Association of Counties Excess Insurance Authority for purposes of providing health benefits, that we withdraw from that entity and for 2010 establish a joint powers authority in concert with the County of Fresno. This project, looking at an alternative to the CSAC EIA, has been a two-year process, and Fresno's interest is relatively recent. So we're still working out some kinks in the terms and conditions of the joint powers agreement, but I'm confident we'll be able to resolve those within days. What I'd like to focus on, and I think this is really important, we are now continuing a trend, if we go forward with this, making significant inroads in dealing with the increasing cost of health insurance for the employees of this county. In 2006, our health insurance premium increased 24% over the prior year. In 2007, we were able to do it with a 10% increase. In 2008, it was down to 8.5. In 2009, it was 4.3. The recommendation from our consultant was .3 tenths of 1%. But based on the independent study we've had conducted, we are recommending to the board that they adopt a program with no increase in premiums for all of our various health plan elements. So a total package of no percentage increase. Obviously, in these difficult times, when we've had to go to the bargaining table and ask employees to provide givebacks, it will be nice to tell them that they're not going to have to give anything else back to maintain their health insurance for 2010. We know certain things as a result of this effort. We know, for example, that there are certain fixed costs that are part of any plan that we are in. Our fixed costs under the new JPA would result in a savings of $828,000, or approximately 5% of the premium we pay. We would be paying excess of $72 per employee per month were we to remain in the EIA, as compared to $48 per employee per month by going into our own JPA with the County of Fresno. That is a very significant savings, in my view, and one that we need to take advantage of. Because we were having a proposal prepared by our existing consultant, we retained an outside firm, Mercer, to conduct an independent study of the proposal prepared by Gallagher, our consultant, as compared to the renewal quotation received from the Excess Insurance Authority. A copy of that report is appended to the agenda item. It lays out all of the various issues. The Mercer study was important for a couple of reasons. Number one, it showed that the county's current trend of loss experience is a negative trend. And that's important, because it provides the basis for us to recommend to you that we not increase the premium for next year. It confirmed the savings that we estimated in fixed costs, and it identified something that we had never heard from the CSAC EIA, and that is that they have a reinsurance pool through an organization called CISC, which is a schools insurance group, and that the EIA's reserve liability that has to be maintained has been estimated at $10.7 million. Except that, that's for all of the EIA, except that, CISC requires, before any refunds come in, that the entity, in this case, the EIA, have three times that reserve level before any refunds would come back. So if we were to remain in the EIA and any surplus that is built up to $33 million, the EIA and its constituent members, including us, would never see a penny of that money under the existing policies. As we create our own JPA, we will have the ability, in concert with Fresno, to decide what our reserves need to be and when we can take advantage of good experience. So that was a significant issue that had never been disclosed to any of the EIA members until this particular project went through. Obviously, in the issue of full disclosure, there's risk. When you go from what amounts to a plan with 75,000 members to a plan that will involve 10,000, us and Fresno, there is risk. There are two areas of risk that are outlined in the Mercer report. One is the individual stop loss is proposed to be at $450,000, as opposed to 400,000. That means if any individual employee or dependent has claims in excess of 400, up to $450,000, we would be paying out of our money's, claims monies, for the difference between 400 and $450,000. Remaining in the EIA, that stop-loss point, that cutoff point for claims is $400,000. Based on past experience over three years, our exposure is less than what the cost of that would be to maintain that lower level of insurance. And if any individual members have interest in kind of the esoteric part of that, I'd be happy to provide that at another time. So let me conclude by saying we would be shifting from Blue Shield to Blue Cross, but the coverage plans and each of the options would remain the same. The payer of claims would continue to be the Tulare Kings Foundation for Medical Care. We will be changing our pharmacy provider from Medco to Walgreens. There's some hidden savings, I think, that we're looking at there. The forecast by Mercer for next year, 2010, assumes that we would achieve about $95,000 in what are known as prescription rebate funds, or pharmacy rebate funds. But because of the time lag, that only includes one quarter's worth of refunds. And so in 2011, we could expect $360,000. So we already have a sort of a built-in hedge on future increases. And yet, even though we're only getting one-fourth of the rebate in the first year, we're still substantially less than the 4% increase proposed by the EIA. The other thing I want to mention about Walgreens, which I think is interesting for people who have a lot of prescription or have maintenance prescriptions, we have had a program for a number of years that allows you to order prescriptions by mail, and you get a three-month supply for a two-months copay. Under the Walgreens program, you can still go to any of the pharmacies you're used to going to, but you can take advantage of the mail order prescription program, but actually physically pick your pills up at Walgreens. So you don't have the wait time or turnaround time. That's another convenience, and we expect there to be savings. In the final analysis, the question is, what if our losses are more than what we expect? The truth is, we pay for our losses. We're large enough, one way or another, that if we're fully insured, we're going to pay for our losses. And typically, the insurance company is going to front-load those costs and collect them upfront. If we're self-insured or we're in a pool, we'll pay them after the fact. Because in the final analysis, as the Excess Insurance Authority actuary finally admitted in a telephone conversation, yes, our plan on premium rate adjustments ultimately is designed to have everybody pay for their own losses. Once you accept that as a fundamental principle, then tying back to whatever is the best price you can get for all of your fixed costs and for managing your program makes sense. So that's it. I do have two representatives here from Gallagher, our consultant, and they would be available. And I'm available to answer your questions.
Questions of Mr. Huntley.
Mr. Chairman, I just had just one quick clarification. You kind of covered it, but again, by switching to the Walgreens program, you mentioned that you don't have to necessarily go to Walgreens. And I just wanted to, again, reiterate that, because I know just by the namesake, you may think that as an employee, so.
Absolutely correct. Costco, Walmart, Rite Aid, CVS, all of them are available.
Got the pillbox. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would just make this, now as a question, as a comment. I appreciate the fact, I remember last year, we looked at this and were interested in pursuing it even then, because we could see the savings. But I appreciate the fact that we did not jump in. We took the time to really study this and thoroughly understand it and know the ins and outs of the program. And I want to thank Mr. Huntley and his team for the hard work they've done in doing this. And I think the real beneficiaries of this will be our employees, because as they, as we know, healthcare costs have historically exceeded by far cost of living increases. And so here's an opportunity for us to really help our employees make their dollars go further. So I'm very favorably inclined to support this program. I want to thank, again, the HR Department for the leadership that they took in this matter.
I have one more, one more comment. I just wanted to say that I, too, thank the HR for all the work that you guys have done to save the county and the taxpayers ultimately $800,000, and also to make it possible for our employees to experience no premium increase, especially during a very difficult financial time. So with that, I would move approval.
Second, move by Vanderpoel, second by Ashida. While we're voting, Tim, thank you. I know a few years ago, when you came in, this was one of the things you said you were going to do. And by looking at the past years, how we've driven down that increase each year from what it was, you're to be commended, and you and your staff that have worked on this. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the vote is unanimous. Now, move to item, our last item on our agenda today, item 24, the rate adjustment for Tonyville, zone of benefit in county service area number one. Mr. Fussell.
Good morning, Board. Brett Fussell, Assistant Director with the Resource Management Agency. And the item before you this morning is staff returning to provide you a report on the protest letters that we received during the public hearing process for the rate adjustment in the utilities in County Service Area 1. On August 11, you held a public hearing. You received protest letters from the zone of benefit for Tuleville, Seville, and Tonyville. We came back on August 18 with a report that the protest was valid in Tuleville, that the protest in Seville was not valid, because there wasn't sufficient number of protests submitted to meet the majority level, but that there was still some outstanding questions on Tonyville. At that time, on August 11 and August 18, you adjusted the rates in all of the zones of benefits, except for Tuleville and Tonyville. Tuleville will stay at its previous year rate because of the protests that were filed. Relative to Tonyville, we received a total number of 32 protests that we found met the minimum criteria, if you will. There are 55 affected parcels within the Tonyville service area, which means there's a threshold for majority protest of 28. Out of those 32, we had five that we identified were not submitted by property owners. And under Proposition 218 in the Implementing Government Code sections, a protest letter can be submitted by either the owner of the property or a tenant on the property. However, only one protest letter may be received per property. So we had five that were not submitted by property owners. We took a look at those. Two of those, we had phone numbers, contact information for the property owners. We made contact with the property owners and validated that the individual that completed the protest letter was indeed a tenant on the property at the time the protest letter was submitted. So we had three that we were not able to make that initial contact. We sent letters by certified mail to the three property owners. One of the letters, all three letters, were not received at the residence at the time they were delivered. So the post office left a note that the letters were available at the post office and returned the letters to the post office to be picked up. One of those letters was picked up by the property owner, but, and in that letter, we included a form to complete and a self-addressed stamped envelope to make it as easy as possible for the property owner to respond. We did not receive a response. The other two letters were left at the post office, to the point where the post office then returned them to the county as undeliverable. We then attempted to make contact at the property site. Staff went out and attempted to contact the occupant of the residence or try to find the owner. Again, they were not able to make contact, but a neighbor gave staff a phone number, which we could try. We then made several attempts with that phone number. And every time we tried, both during the day and in the evening, the phone was off, and we were not able to make contact with the property owner. In addition, one of the residents, when they made the site visit, there was a stack of mail on the porch that was just sitting there that hadn't been picked up by the property owner. So from that, we concluded that we were not able to validate the protest letters from three of those parcels. That then dropped the number of valid protest letters down to 26, which is two below the threshold of 28 in order to have a valid majority protest. And so with that, staff would recommend that the board acknowledge that a written protest was not received for the Tonyville zone of benefit, and that you approve the user fees identified in Exhibit A to the resolution for the Tonyville sewer zone of benefit, and effectively back to September 1 of this year, which was the effective date of the other user rate adjustments for the other zones of benefit, again, with the exception of Tuleville. With that, I would respond to any questions that the board may have.
Any questions of staff? Is there anyone here wishing to address this item? Anybody likes to talk to the board before we take action? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Letitia Sabios. It's 21663 Brooks Avenue, which is Tonyville. It's sad to hear what this gentleman had just said about these protest letters that we have. We wish he would have been able to get ahold of one of the community members there from Tonyville, where we could have maybe gone to the home to ask where they were, or if they were living up north at the time. Because right now, at this last two months, we have a lot of farm labor workers that are working up north. So they're not home, they're not available to get ahold of. But with our help, I'm sure we would have been able to find them or get a legal signature from someone. So I think they took little steps around us, and we should have been involved in something like this. And again, we're here hoping you're not going to raise our fees. We don't know what to do anymore with the fees that are raised. Every year, we come back with the same problem, that there's increase in repairs, or whatever they say that's going up. If it is increased and we can't stop it, we would like to see if there's any way that we could get, at the end of the year, a letter saying what was done, what repairs were done, what was actually done to these, to the site. I live next door to the site, and I see a truck pull up maybe once every two or three weeks. They stay there five, 10 minutes. So I really don't know what is being done, or what could be done away from there that we're not seeing. There is a lot of problems with the water not going into the sewer lines or coming back up to homes. People have called. There's nothing been done. And we'd just like to see if, we could at least get a form saying what they've done, what part came off, what other thousands of dollars went into a new part, what has been done. We don't see anybody out there. And I hope that you'll take interest into this small community, which is all practically agriculture workers. And like I say, the letters really don't make sense. We had a lot of petitions out. But of course, like I say, there were many that were away from them home, working up north. If there's any way we could get the petitions out again now that they're back, we would appreciate that. But if not, we should have been informed of who they were looking for.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
I'd like to address the concerns of Tonyville, that we have a procedure that we have to go through and follow. And unfortunately, it did not meet the threshold votes to stop the rate increase. But I did have a very positive conversation with City Lindsay that we're going to move forward on.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick comment before, I believe a motion will be made here momentarily. But you do make, there is an annual report that comes out, if I'm not mistaken, on the operational costs. I mean, that's a predicate to our having, raising the fees, is there's an analysis done of the actual cost providing this level of service that's provided. And for the most part, it's not a, my, you know, or Fussell can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're still trying to achieve operational costs. We're not, we're not even talking about, I mean, there may be some minor fixes and so forth that are always engaged in any type of project, but we're talking about what it costs to pay always engaged in any type of project, but we're talking about what it costs to pay for labor and utilities and testing. And oftentimes, I mean, we, one of the things that's a little bit frustrating for us is, of course, there's been this deficiency for some time. And the state always seems to go out of its way to make things more difficult for us by requiring more tests and different kinds of tests, and in other words, increasing the cost of operating these facilities. So, what happens here is that we're still trying to achieve a revenue stream that pays for the cost of running the program. We don't even build into that any capital costs of replacement for capital replacement, which ultimately will be needed in the future unless there's something, way of avoiding this by connecting it up with the City of Lindsay. But that's my understanding of the situation. And so, your request for information will obviously be given. There's no, there's nothing that's trying to be hidden here by the county. But what we have been trying to do in all these areas is to try to achieve a, not a subsidy from the county to maintain these systems. So, we understand that it's very expensive. And I believe, as Mr. Sheed has pointed out, the real solution to, whenever we can, is gonna be to connect these systems up with larger operations, usually cities, where we can get the benefit of sharing the cost over a larger group of people, and that will help to bring the cost down to Toneyville and to other places. But that's really the situation we find ourselves in.
Right. The last meeting I was here, they suggested that maybe we made more homes out there, would bring in more money, monthly charges for the sewer lines. But as I say, I have a property right next to the pump sites, and my daughter wanted to make a home there. And they didn't let her, the county didn't let her. They said no, that when they made the deal with Lindsay, it was only up to this street and this way. So, she was on this side, so she wasn't allowed to hook up with the sewer lines. But anyway, she had to end up buying a septic tank, but now it seems that she's happier because her septic tank costs her $3,500 and is guaranteed for 10 years. So, when you look at that and what we're paying them, she's gonna be saving more than we are. And we're still looking for a hike every year.
I understand.
So, we are interested in hooking up maybe to Lindsay, and we want to start that process immediately to where we can just go over there and save either money, or if you give us a chance again to put up our septic tanks. Because I think if everybody followed through the right way and did put a nice septic tank, then we wouldn't have to worry about this monthly bill for 10 years. And like I say, she's saving. So, she came out better than we are.
Mr. Fussell, do you have a quick question?
Yes.
Does this rate increase still include a county match, I'll call it, or a county subsidy?
Yes, it still requires a small contribution from the revolving loan fund in order to make this whole. And Supervisor Worley is correct, we're only capturing operational costs. We are not accounting for depreciation. It's deducted out in determining the cost to determine the loan from the general fund revolving loan fund. And Toneyville is connected to the City of Lindsay's treatment facilities. The house is drained to a lift station, which is then pumped up, and then either through forced main or gravity, it goes to the Lindsay Treatment Plant. So, we do get a bill from the City of Lindsay for the treatment of that. And the county does have an agreement with the City of Lindsay that limits the number of connections that can be connected to that system.
Can we change the name of the revolving loan fund sometime in my lifetime? You don't need to answer that. Mr. Sheed, I'm sorry, you still had something to say?
I believe that we need to start to talk not only about sewer, but we need to talk to the City of Lindsay about water. And like I said, I did receive a positive response from the City of Lindsay on the water issue, so we might as well talk about both issues. These, there will be a time that septic tanks will not be acceptable, and they will not be cheaper than your sewer hookup, because they've been trying to pass a bill about inspections on septic tanks every three years, and it's getting a lot more complicated. So, we'll have a discussion. I'll set a meeting up with them. But at this point in time, because of procedures, and we did do a lot of research in trying to find these people and identify them, that next year starts the process over again. But as of this year, we're gonna have to go ahead with what we've, staff's recommended. So, I make that motion.
And moved by Ashida, except staff recommendation?
Second.
Second by Ennis. Please cast your votes. It's unanimous.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Brett. Council, I know we have reason for closed session. Numerous 20-some-odd items, maybe one or two off.
We do, Mr. Chairman. You have items A through O on your Board's closed session. Hang on one second.
We do have an addendum with additional items.
That's not correct. It's actually items A through R on your Board's closed session agenda and addendum. Item A is off agenda. I do not anticipate any announcements.
Great, we'll adjourn to closed session. Thank you for coming today.